It is six thirty PM and I call this meeting to order. Please stand and we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the letter of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council. Tonight, I have a proclamation to read. But first, I would like to quickly say that this past weekend, there was a party in the park regarding basically a ribbon cutting for the all-inclusive Every Child's Dream Playground at Lake Park, which was delayed by COVID. So it was great to have that event take place this past Saturday. Also, I took part in Ride the Ridges put on by the Rotary, which really showcases the Winona area. And events like that, in general, will really help introduce tourists and other people to our area. And it's pretty cool to see that. Also, in case you missed it, since this is televised and the public comment period is not, tonight, we had our first public comment period in 12 years, which I'm excited to say was something that I had been thinking about for a long time and glad to see it happen. And in general, I guess, you know, some of my hopes, dreams, and wishes. I remember watching a video of a guy who stood up in front of a council meeting in wherever, I don't know. But he started off very seriously and then broke into every Wednesday should be official Taco Day for the city. So that is what I always hoped public comment would be. But, but I also, because I love tacos, but I also, at the same time, I understand the importance of public comment. It is important to be able to get your voice on record, speak to all of us at once. But at the same time, I'd like to remind everyone that you do have opportunities to reach out to us via phone, email, or in person. And from my understanding, I know my own personal experience and with most of our council members, if not all of them, we're very available. So if you ever have something that you want to discuss, we're there for you. That's our job. So again, glad to see public comment back in action again. It will be something we'll work through. It might change down the road, but as of right now, the policies and procedures that we have in place are what we're going to stick with for the time being. So tonight, I have a proclamation to read. City of Winona Proclamation. Whereas a partnership between the La Crosse, La Crescent, and Winona libraries, as well as the City of La Crosse, University of Wisconsin La Crosse, and the Western Technical College with funding from all partners, the Franciscan Sisters of Perpetual Adoration, and the Minnesota Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund. And whereas a community read, a community read, a community read has launched encouraging all members of three communities, La Crosse, La Crescent, and Winona, to read the same book, Flight Behavior by Barbara Kingslerber, and attend collaborative programming on the book's themes. And whereas discussions, programs, and events will relate to regional environmental changes and the effects it has on our communities to encourage participation and thought on the topic of climate change. Now therefore, I, Mayor Scott Sherman, hereby proclaim this fall 2022 as the Drift List Regional Read in the City of Winona and encourage all to participate. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Winona to be affixed this nineteenth day of September 2022. City Manager Chadubal, do you have any comments this evening?
Mayor and Council, no comments tonight.
Very good. Thank you. I will now ask the City Clerk to take roll call.
Mayor Scott Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Young.
Here.
Moller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Aiden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Rapinski. Under the required public hearings, item two point one is to consider the resolution to levy assessments for unpaid charges. And an updated assessment role was submitted to the council this evening. And Finance Director Rojan is here if you have questions.
Real quickly, for each public hearing, staff will make a short presentation and then I will ask if anyone from the public wishes to speak to the matter. Each person needs to clearly state your name and address, and you will be given up to three minutes to make your testimony. I will call three times for public comments. Once the hearing is closed, the public may not participate in the discussion by City Council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The assessment list. We received $10,000 of payments since the agenda was put together on 28 properties. And this is the lowest, the second lowest assessment in the last 14 years, with last year being the lowest.
Very good. Thank you, Jessica. Does anybody from the public wish to speak regarding the resolution to levy assessments for unpaid charges? I'll ask again if anyone from the public wishes to speak during the public hearing portion. Again, I will ask if anyone would like to speak regarding item two point one, considering resolution to levy assessments for unpaid charges. Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion, Michelle?
It's not really discussion. It's a request and paper saving. Perhaps instead of getting all of this list with our agenda, we just get it on the night of. I mean, I don't need to see all of the names, but then we won't have to print it twice. Just a request. That's all.
Thank you, Michelle. Steve, you had something?
Okay.
I do know that we had a request from a citizen. There was some confusion over what their specific charges were, not in terms of amount, but in terms of what they were being charged for. So might be willing to look at a way to clarify that in the mailings so that they have understanding of what their charges are. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point one is the Otis Street Neighborhood Block Party Request for Sunday, October 2nd.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point two is a street closure for Peters Beer Garden Oktoberfest on Saturday, October 1st.
Make a motion to approve that request.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point three is a request for handicap parking to be added on Mankato Avenue.
Make a motion and introduce the attached ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from George. Any discussion? I do have one question, Ryan, if you don't mind. Well, these are great because I know they have specific needs for the residents of those areas or businesses a lot of times. What happens if that person moves away or if someone passes or something like that? What, do we have follow-up on that eventually or how does?
I guess I don't know if we've really ever had follow-up. It'd be something we would probably have to ever request for to know that it wasn't any longer needed and then we'd have to just come through council again. I guess we're sending that resolution.
Okay.
Or ordinance.
Very good. Just a question I had. Thank you. Appreciate it, Ryan. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point four is the University of Minnesota Winona County 4-H License Agreement for the Use of the East Rec Center.
Make a motion to approve the attached agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the contract with the University of Minnesota Extension, Winona County 4-H.
Motion from Michelle, a second from Pam. Any discussion? I did have a quick question. What kind of, I don't know if Patrick, you can speak, Ally? What kind of programming are we doing? It looks great, but I don't think it's specified in the agenda.
Mayor and Council, we have done a six-week spin club, so short timeframe programming and looking to do more spin clubs. So specifically focused, it was on nutritious and accessible meals this last time. And so looking to do more programming like that, as well as a potential monthly 4-H meeting at the rec.
Okay. And then I'll kind of rotate.
Yep.
Programming. Great. Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point five is a reappointment to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority of James Kirk.
Move to approve that appointment.
Second.
We have a motion by George, a second from Michelle. Any discussion, George?
Just want to say that James is a very, very good board member. He's involved in the kids' first programs out at the Thirley Homes out there and through Winona State himself and the housing. He do a very, very good job at putting that program on.
Very good. Thank you, George. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point six is a Friends of the Winona Parks Tree Planting Donation.
Make a motion to adopt the attached resolution and accept the donation.
Motion from Michelle. Give it to Pam, that she's got the second. Any discussion, Michelle?
I just want to thank the Friends of Winona Parks and all of the citizens who gave to this. I think approximately they're valuing it at 16,500 and this is going to get a significant number of trees replanted in the City of Winona that are going to replace the trees that we lost to that dang ash borer. So thank you for your efforts on that.
Absolutely. Also, I met with Winona Dakota Unity Alliance last week and some of the plantings are going to go in Unity Park. And I'd like to thank John Howard, Sustainability Coordinator, obviously Friends of Winona Parks, Winona Nursery for this. But John's been working with them to determine what, what plants are appropriate for their specific potentially medicinal needs. So thank you for that. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point seven, Councilmember Borzakowski requested time on the agenda.
Thank you. Going back to how this whole thing got started, I remember we were looking at a East End Rec Community Center project, how everything first got going. Then time went by and then again, we looked at probably putting public safety down there, police and fire, and then community center, et cetera, and so on, so forth. Now, as being the councilman from that area, when this proposal first came up, I totally jumped right on it. I said, wow, we've got a $40 million project. And who on council would not want a $40 million project in your ward? We have rec opportunities, community center, and having police, police right in the neighborhood, so on, so forth, fire in the neighborhood, so on. By no means am I against our public safety departments of police and fire. They are excellent. They perform well and they, and they do a very, very good job of protecting us. So anyway, I guess as that first came on, then we had our public meeting here. And you know, there was, you know, a lot of people that opposed the police and fire station down there. As far as community rec and a new rec building, yes, okay, but you know, where are we going to be building the structure, so on, so forth? And of course, we need the same Stan School to help us out. So now we still don't know what the possibility is of the school property, so on, so forth. Anyway, since that public, since that public meeting, I have received many emails, text messages, along with letters being mailed to me. And I've been hearing from people throughout the fourth ward that have sent me letters in regards to this project. Now, everyone in the ward is not against this project. There are some people that they have expressed interest in this project going forward. Anyway, as I receive letters and so on, so forth, one of the, one of the nicest letters that I received was from my predecessor, former councilman Dave Koba. Dave kind of put himself into a few years there. He didn't say it, but I think he at one time probably played at the rec center. But he says his grandchildren did, his children and people in the neighborhood that went and, you know, used the East Rec Center for many, many things. Now, they also had a letter from a lady that said, you know, George, and she's very true on this, the East End Rec Center is the hub of the east end of the fourth ward. That building was new, I think, in eighty-six, eighty-seven. Still a very, very good building and can still, you know, take care of the needs that the people have for, for their children and programs. But you know, I think back about it, yes, it is the hub of the fourth ward. I've been down there to a few events and things taken place. It's, it's been a a site for events, the Thanksgiving dinner, the vaccination site. I believe it even was a shelter for some of the people when the water went out in the west end of town. I thought there was 12 or 15 families that stayed in there overnight, seeking shelter till they were able to get back into their home. And of course, many, many other things that have gone on in that center. So like I say, you know, not everyone is against this, against this proposal. There are some folks that, you know, that, that do believe in it. And like I say, for police, fire, you can come to my neighborhood anytime you want. I certainly don't have no problem with either one of those, those two departments. But being on what I've heard here in the past and all of the letters that I've received, there's an overwhelming response to not continue on with this East End Rec Center site for a public safety block. So with that, I would just like to propose this motion to eliminate the East End Recreation Center site as an option for a combined public safety facility and to direct staff to continue to explore the alternate locations for a combined or separate, or separate public safety building, while still keeping the option open for a community center at the East Rec if that plan should ever come possible, if other sites are not found. So that's my motion and I hope council supports the motion and then you folks can say what you'd like to say.
Second.
We have a motion from George, motion from George, the second from Michelle. We'll start with Steve.
Thank you, George. I think it's important that we have an element of, of common purpose and, and, and some level of broad support if we were to consider that, that location. And I don't think we have it. So I intend to support the motion so we can clear the deck and move on. So, thank you.
Eileen?
I'm, I'm very supportive and I'm happy that George proposed this and thank you so much, George.
Thank you.
Michelle?
Just want to say that we did what we said, we listened. I did what I said. We took in all of your comments and I went out to the communities in Ward one and two and talked to people about it. And there was support for the police and fire, but they didn't particularly think that that was the best location. So it's a very simple decision for me to support this motion and to consider other locations which are readily available in the city that may better serve the police and fires location.
Thank you. Pam?
Yes, well, thank you. Thank you, George. I agree with this completely. And I look forward to working with, working with staff and working with the community to find, to find the right places.
Thank you, Pam. All right, my turn. So I have talked to probably hundreds of people about this. In fact, many in this crowd I've spoken to personally over the phone. I am concerned that if we eliminate this option, that regardless of where we put a police and fire building, we will continue to get the same comments. I don't want to see that. I don't want to see our community torn apart by concrete blocks because those, that's technically what those are. That's what we're talking about, buildings. As I'm sitting here and I'm looking through all of the information I've received, top to bottom, all the options that we have, ultimately, everything I've talked about up to this point, everything I've heard, my decisions were based on the information that I had. On my ride down here tonight, I was going to vote against this. But when I knew that we were going to potentially take this off, a weight was lifted off of my shoulders. Now, I've been through some crap since I've been here. I tried to enforce a mask mandate, which was rescinded. I received 500 emails about that. I had death threats against my family. I also stood up for the Broadway Road Diet, which didn't happen. I received 300 emails on that. East End Rec, I received about 100 emails. Tonight, I will support George's motion. But I would like to ask the community that you support us in the direction we do move with police and fire and community center. This will take support from the entire council. It will take support from the community. It will take support from everyone in this city. We are going to have higher costs if we don't combine these. We are going to have challenges in terms of maintenance on these buildings moving forward. We are going to get kickbacks from certain people who did want to see this move forward. And so in that regard, again, I will support George's motion. I will ask that Monica take a roll call vote on this one. Any other discussion? Eileen?
Yes, I, I'm glad that the most, most of council has changed how they felt about this issue. I'm happy that testimony and public opinion has, has swayed everyone. I would, Mayor, respectfully like to push back that it's just about concrete because it's not. The East End Rec is a building, yes, but as George mentioned, it's a hub. It is, it, it looks like a building. It looks like a block, but it stands for something more than that. And I think it was appropriate that there was this much outcry from the community. And I'm really happy that we saw folks mobilize and different groups of people who don't always have common interests got together. And so I appreciate that folks have listened to that. But I think that when there are issues like this where the, many of the very vulnerable people of our community are at risk of having resources taken away, that there should be contentious discussions and there should be uncomfortable feelings and there should be lots of emails because that means that this is working. So I know it's not fun and as Minnesotans, we don't like it, but it has to happen. So that's all.
I agree with you. It is a hub. And I don't try to discount that by saying that these are buildings. My hope was that initially, we would look beyond the issues of replacing the East End Rec. And I was hoping that the discussions would turn to, how can we make it better? I think ultimately, that's what we have to do is regardless of how we move forward, whether it's this issue or another, we always have to look at how to make something better than what we currently have. That's important. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Scott Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Aiden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Motion passes.
The forum, the forum.
Item three point eight is the Human Rights Commission Resolution Regarding the East Rec Center.
I make a motion, we file that resolution.
I'll second that. We have a motion from Michelle, a second from George. We do have Jacob here, if anybody has any questions.
Okay.
On this.
Go ahead.
On behalf of the Human Rights Commission, obviously, the previous agenda item had a lot more luster and effect. But we did want to raise the fact that we did bring this resolution from the Human Rights Commission. Thank you for acknowledging it and thank you for your work immediately earlier tonight. I just also wanted to point attention to John Latch Human Rights Awards. Nominations are due on October 28th and absentee balloting for the general election opens on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point nine is the Winona Senior High School Homecoming Parade.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion from George, second from Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Under new business, item five point one is the proposed fee ordinance for 2023.
Make a motion and introduce the proposed fee ordinance.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point two is to move the polling sites for Ward two precincts one and three.
Make a motion to approve that resolution.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, second from Pam. Monica, can you just real quickly state publicly what the changes will be?
Sure. So currently, Ward two precinct one, which is the westerly end of Ward two, the current polling site was the Friendship Center. That move was made during 2020 during COVID. That site will now be moved to the vacant storefront at the Winona Mall. Ward two precinct three was current, was at Cotter Schools and that will be moved to the Friendship Center.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Eileen?
Monica, is there a way that the folks in these precincts are alerted? Like, is there something that goes out, excuse me, goes out to registered voters that says, hey, your polling place moved?
Mayor and Council, yes. Once this resolution is sent to the county, the county auditor will send a postcard to every registered voter.
Okay.
So they'll get something in the mail if they're pre-registered. We will also have large sidewalk signs at the previous locations directing people to the new locations.
Okay, great. Thank you. Caesar, can you put this in the paper?
And it is also on the city website. And if you go to MNvotes.org and look up your polling site under the poll finder, they are there. And if you have Google Maps, it has a map to where your location is.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point three, salary increases for the mayor and council.
I make a motion to maintain the current salaries.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, second from George. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I believe that's in our, in our budget too, right? When we went through the sessions that we froze that. Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point four is a resolution ordering assessment of costs for the 2022 sidewalk replacement project.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point five is a report on the assessment role for the 2022 project and resolution to schedule the hearing for October seventeenth.
I make a motion to consider the attached resolution and schedule the public hearing for Monday, October seventeenth at six thirty.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, second from Steve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point six is a resolution ordering assessment of costs for the 2022 miscellaneous utilities.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, second from Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point seven is a report on the assessment role for the 2022 miscellaneous utilities and a resolution to set the public hearing for October seventeenth.
Make a motion to consider the attached resolution and schedule the public hearing for also October seventeenth.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point eight is the 2023 South Baker Street Reconstruction Project, City Manager's Recommendation.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Motion from Michelle, second from Pam. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
If I could, just so I have clarity, this was the project that was postponed from this past year, and we're pushing it up to this year, and we've budgeted for this. And we're expecting this. Any major changes in what we're doing, scope? This is just simply moving from, from this year, pushing it to next.
Yep, nothing's changed. Nope.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point nine is the 2023 South Baker Street Reconstruction Project Feasibility Report and Resolution Ordering Hearing for Monday, October seventeenth.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution and set the public hearing for Monday, October seventeenth.
Motion from Michelle, second from Pam. Michelle?
There better not be a Vikings game that night, because I can't promise to get us out of here by seven thirty. Just saying.
Eileen?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions. I asked Monica about this earlier, but I think we got this report at a previous council meeting. And I, did we vote on it already? Okay, so, all right, so we've already accepted the report. So this action item is just to set the hearing, is that correct? Okay, great. I was a little bit confused about that. And then I also have a question, if maybe Ryan can answer it for me. I think someone was told that because of state aid, that this will not be eligible for a bike lane on South Baker once it's reconstructed. Is that the case?
Yep, that's correct. We have to follow state aid design guidelines.
Okay. And is there a reason that that street doesn't have one or won't have one?
Basically, just state aid doesn't accept or follow like complete street guidelines. So we just have to follow their design guidelines in order to get our state aid funding.
Okay.
Yep.
I wish they did. I don't want that, because that goes right from Quick Trip to the high school.
Yeah, so one, one point of clarification here. Ryan, there is a process to adopt our local municipal, municipal ordinance regarding complete streets if we apply for it early enough, correct?
I'd have to look into that one, I guess.
Okay, I believe that's the case. And in future projects like this, I think since we do have that ordinance in place to adopt complete streets whenever possible, I'd like to see that happen. I know the state does not have a complete streets policy, but our city does, and there are other cities within the state that do. That is something I would like consideration on it when we move forward on other projects, because we've done, what, Maine, Franklin, Sioux, some other ones, South Baker now, and we'll probably be doing a few more here and there. But I would really like to see that happen if possible, since we did approve that complete streets policy.
I agree. I have two more quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
Will the very nice rubber bits that go up to the tracks be as nice as they are now? Because I'm very happy that those are the ones right by my house, and the ones on Sioux Street are not good. And so.
Not talking about Hamilton, okay, George?
I'm hoping it won't get worse, because right now it's very smooth.
Yep, we're not replacing the crossing there.
Groovy. Thank you. And then just as a follow-up to the bike lane question, is there any way we could go back later and, and, and put in a bike lane? I just, I, I wouldn't.
Do you have a couple million?
Yeah. To me, it just looked like paint, and that is me not being part of the street department. But especially because of that just running right into the high school, and I live right there. And so seeing kids all the time going that way, and it would just be great to add that safety feature.
Without widening, probably not. We'd probably end up getting a little too narrow for, I guess, just safety reasons, so.
Good try. No, you don't. That's what mom always said. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item seven point one is council concerns.
Councilmember Borzakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. The roundabout update, it's coming along. Still some traffic congestion as they're moving lanes. But you get into that roundabout, the one out on sixty-one, you better know where you're going, because we're all coming, so. It's definitely not a traffic delay. You're moving, so. I'd just like to mention or send out congratulations to Paul Martin, who retired from the Water Department last week, Thursday, I believe. And then also, he's checking his watch, because kickoff's seven thirty.
I'm not.
We have time, George.
Oh, getting messages on item.
Okay.
Yeah.
And also, I believe there's two police officers retiring this week. Wish them luck and thank the police, the Water Department, all those employees for their service, so. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Councilmember Alexander.
The cemetery walk is coming up on October eighth and ninth for the public. It's the biggest, well, one of the bigger fundraisers for the historic society, and it's a lot of good fun. If you are not up to walking in the cemetery, or the weather seems iffy, Wednesday evening, October fifth, you can always get a ticket, go on in and watch the, the whole event unfold in front of you on the stage there. If you have an opportunity or never been, it's, it's, it's quite a lovely place to spend the day. You'll get to walk by some old cemetery sites, see some mausoleums, check out the new memorial for our veterans at the opening gate. Hope to see you down there. I will be acting as a former teacher this year. So hopefully, I'll see some of you out there.
Thank you, Michelle. Councilmember item?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moller?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Councilmember Young?
The second train is coming. The rumors are true. Got an update for you. September twenty-seventh, and I'll pass this, I'll email it out, and you can forward it as you see fit. Every single grade crossing is going to get looked at, so it's the first engineering walk-through. That's Hamilton, Hamilton Street, right on there. In fact, it's two forty-five PM on the twenty-seventh. They'll be there. You're invited. But we'll have, we'll have our engineering, we'll have rail people there, we'll have WISDOT and Min, I don't know if WISDOT will be there, but MinDOT will be there. They'll be walking through all the at-grade rail crossings that day. We have, we have nineteen million dollars for the rail upgrades coming to Winona, mostly on the east end and the west end, or the north end or the south end, depending how you look at the world. Mostly, it's going to be additional siding. We'll have some upgrades to our depot as well. It's really happening, construction starting next summer.
Thank you.
I'm Steve.
So it's two forty-five. I'll forward it, and then, and then it'll get forwarded out.
Yeah, we don't need too many cooks in the kitchen.
Moving on to the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes from September sixth and an ordinance to update parking restrictions on Fourth Street.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, second from Eileen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The time being seven ten, and there being no further business to come before the council this evening, I move we adjourn.
I will second that.
Motion from Michelle, second from George. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Very good.